Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting, West Valley City Council. We welcome you all tonight. Boy, it's not too often we get very many people here, so it's kind of going to be fun. And we have a sort of agenda. So, let's see, we have all council members present, except for Councilman Fittisimana, who is excused tonight. We will begin with an opening ceremony. We'll turn to Councilman Lars Nordfeldt.
Thank you, Mayor. Will anyone please rise with me and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
But the one thing we don't have is any scouts tonight, unless any of you happen to be scouts. We usually have some scouts here and we always like to recognize them. We need to approve our minutes of March 19th, so I need a motion on the minutes.
Move for approval of the minutes?
Second. Seeing no further comments? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes of March 19th, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. We now come to our comment period in all of our meetings, and since there are a number of you here, perhaps a few comments would be appropriate. We invite and like to have our citizens comment. During our comment period, you can speak on any issue that you want. That is not true of the council. For us to talk about a policy issue or have a discussion about a policy issue is actually illegal. We are bound by state law whenever we have discussion on policy as elected officials, that we announce it ahead of time, put it on our agenda, publicize it. The minimum, I believe, is 24 hours, although we typically will do ours several days in advance. So if we don't say a whole lot or respond, there's a reason. And also for our public comment period, for those of you who have signed up, some of you have been here before, and that's fine. The time is yours to speak. It's not a debate time, it's not question and answer. Some of those may be followed up on afterwards after the meeting. There are sometimes issues that come up that we will add to our agenda for the next week when we can discuss them. But I would also add one more thing, and it's not meant to discourage you, and I'll explain that, but remember that what you say is a public record and permanently and forever recorded. So, we had last week someone say something that could be construed as quite negative. I'm trying to coach this in very politically correct terms, and could have created major problems and even been possibly even a story in the newspaper. We say, "Fine, be passionate, but don't let your emotions have you say something that you might regret later." So, just a word of caution, just because it happened last week. But please, we don't want to discourage you in any way, we just remind you of that, that it's very real. We live with it all the time. Anything we say, even when it's not in a meeting, gets almost permanently recorded. So, with that then, we're going to start our public comment period. We have a number of people who've signed up. Your comments are addressed to me as the mayor, so that we don't single out anyone else on the council. I don't know why they do that, but that's the way they said it. And don't expect much response. We may make a very, very brief comment at the end of the discussion, but we won't interact with you. It's your time, and you can use it as you want to. Maximum of five minutes. See, that gets anything else. And you can talk about anything, or even multiple items. We have some of those. So with that introduction then, I'm going to start down the list. Most of these I can read, and if I get it wrong, you can correct me when you come up to the microphone, okay? And of course, we'll start with one who came early and signed up early, who's been here before, Jim Visa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I adopted a can. It finally got done. But there is a glitch with the ordinance. It's a simple glitch, and I think the IT guy could fix it in a couple of minutes. I've been, more than one, three people have reached out to me through social media and said they went down to the shelter to get the pet permit, and there was questions on it that they didn't have the information for and wanted to take the permit home, and they weren't allowed to do so. I don't understand why. I mean, they let me take pictures of it and stuff like that, but if we put a link on the shelter's site, they could print it off, they'll know exactly what it is, and like I said, it'd take an IT guy two minutes to do something like that. My suggestion. I'm going to address a little bit what happened last week, too. I appreciate what the mayor said. I went back and reviewed it because of the comments coming from the, I believe it's the assistant city person, I believe, city manager. I listened to what the citizen said, and then I listened to the comments. I believe the comments were inappropriate, coming from a representative of West Valley, and the mayor did shut down, but that person did say some stuff in there that I don't feel should have been said as a citizen. I know the mayor tried to shut down, but they were said, and like you said, it's public record. And I mean, I believe that that person owes the citizen an apology. I mean, it's just because what was said and what he was accused of saying are totally different things. So, and then the other thing is, since the last few weeks, there's been a lot of talk about the code enforcement officers. I've talked to a couple of people about it, and the police have a review board. What about a code enforcement review board? Before it gets all the way up to Lane, have a citizen review board. Something to consider. Maybe something they might want to do in the city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ted Butcher.
Yeah, we got involved in a thing where...
It's code enforcement.
Code enforcement, yeah. And we had a Suburban parked in our driveway. I couldn't get rid of it because I didn't have a title. My daughter brought it in the yard while he's at the cabin. And so, I applied for a title for it, and Mark Opino knew that I applied for a title. And he told me, he says, "I'm going to have a wrecker come down there and haul that away at your expense." I told him we couldn't because once it was, once we applied for a title, we couldn't move it. That's what they told us at the state tax commission. And I complied with everything, except for moving the Suburban. I couldn't. It took like five or six weeks to get a title for it. They said originally, they said it'd take 30 days. Then the 30 days went into 30 more days. And anyway, we got fined $6,500 for not complying. We was trying to comply, but the judge cut it down to 395. So, but I didn't think it was fair the way Mark Opino worked it out, because he knew what was going on.
I want to talk for a minute because I'd talk faster. Anyway, I talked to Mr. Opino, and I told him that we couldn't move it because the state wouldn't let us move it. We had paperwork and everything that shows all that. But he still, after the two weeks, fined us, and we were in, you know, we weren't in compliance because it was still in our driveway. But legally, the state told us we could not move it because it had a lien on it. Okay, we didn't know how to lean on it, but because it had a lien on it, they had to have 30 days to come and get it after they notified them. And then after that 30 days, they had another letter, they sent, all of this is here, saying that he had another 14 days to comply because it was his last notice. The man owned the car. So it took all of that time to get rid of it, and we only had two weeks to get rid of it. And although I talked to Mr. Opino and I talked to the, well, my husband talked to that judge. He wouldn't talk to me. I raised my hand, but he wouldn't talk to me. And we ended up with a big fine anyway, about something we couldn't do anything about. And this compliance man, a lot of the neighbors were pretty upset with him. I know, you probably don't want to hear that, but he, you know, you need more than two weeks in some cases to take care of problems. And when you call him and ask him to be patient and they don't, then there's a problem there, you know? Anyway, I said my piece. Thank you. Do you have anything else to say?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Marty Snyder.
Hello. How you guys doing? Okay, I just wanted to say about this ordinance, guy is kind of rude. I thought they were supposed to work with you in some way, but he hasn't, he hasn't really worked with us at all. I don't even have paperwork, for one. I'm cleaning my yard. They didn't give me any paperwork. They sent it down to my stepmother. There's kind of a problem there on the house, so I still haven't gotten no paperwork. They gave me two weeks to get it cleaned up. And that was in the middle of winter when it was happening. When they first gave me the two weeks, we've been busting heavies to get it done. And then I got a motorhome that's a diesel, and they said they can't have it. So I don't know what's going to happen there. But it's licensed as a motorhome, not as a commercial truck. So, we need to do something about that. See if they can do about that. I don't know. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Briden.
Thank you for giving me five minutes. I appreciate it. Some of these people here, I hear this gentleman talking about the cats. Really unique story. Here's a man that wanted something to happen out of this city. And this, I was kind of surprised that he even showed up today, but it shows that if an individual that lives in West Valley City is passionate about something and wants to pass, neighbors that pollute their yards, neighbors that park on the street and don't care about their other neighbors, they're just concerned about how much time they have to clean up. You know, I am so impressed right now with the ordinance people right now and with the parking enforcement people. I had no idea that somebody is finally listening to the citizens. It's an embarrassment. And all of you, if you had a chance to look at your minutes I sent you, Seattle is dying. And I know it's a long YouTube video, but it's very disturbing when you see an Emerald City like Seattle and know what's killing it. And it's because of the drugs. And I don't think this city is putting enough money into narcotics and into helping people come clean. You know, in Portland, they put people to work and they give them a job. And they had so many people, they didn't know what to do with them. And so they, they raised the tax a nickel, and they put all these people to pump gas for vehicles that come into service stations. And it gave the people that didn't have skills or labors or anything like that, it gave them an opportunity to do some work. I think, you know, that's just being creative and trying to find jobs for people that are homeless and helping them out, you know? I look at this, the mayor in Salt Lake City, she stands up for her city, and I applaud anybody when they, they don't belong to the good old boys' club. And how many of here belong to that good old boys' club? How many here? You know, I can go back when this city was first implemented, and I worried about West Valley. Is West Valley going to die? Is Seattle? Are we looking at the future? Are we looking at San Francisco? We're looking at New York? Looking at Los Angeles? San Francisco? And you can see the drug epidemic. And I'm very, very concerned. But I appreciate you moving forward and trying to clean up our community and helping them understand, you know, what is their driveway. A lot of people feel that, you know, the front of their house is the driveway. And just because it's, it's there in front of their house, that's their property. No, it's city property. The sidewalk is city property. And from the sidewalk to the street is city property. We have to maintain that easement, and we all know that. So, I brought a video. You'll have to excuse me, and I don't mean to be rude, but I, I love people that stand up for what they believe. And I've only got 30 seconds to do this, huh? And it reminds me of the good old boys' club. And so I had to play this, and I only got 24 seconds. Smiling faces. I know this individual, and I don't trust this individual, and he's a milkman. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now I believe the next one on here may be, then we've already heard, Charles Snyder. Okay. I wasn't quite sure, because it looked like similar addresses.
Yes, I think Charles Snyder thinks for a time. Anyway, I moved in to help my cousin, and Pentel's been nothing but harassing him. And, you know, I look at it like this. I know you don't need the yards all messed and everything, but I just got out of the hospital, $350,000 bill for four days, you know? And here you guys are talking about, Pentel and all us talking about how they're going to come and take the house, and I like, because nobody can afford an $86,000 fine. And it's like, you know, what's in the backyard, but stay in the backyard. Got grandfather rights. I mean, you know, been out for, before West Valley was even a city. We was going Grainger Hunter, all that, you know, like with Butchers, you know, their neighbors. They've been there since 1969, and yet they're getting hit. I just moved from my mother's. We've been there since 1972. We got grandfather rights. Pentel's been there, he's been, you know, harassed there. We don't have a problem with them no more. Come to court, and we never paid a fine on it because, like we said, we was grandfathered in, we've been here. It's the citizens of Valley here, Grainger, May, West Valley, Hunter and all that. And if you guys want to sit here and take our houses, you leave everybody no choice but to fight back, you know? And Pentel also would have somebody there saying, "That car's going to be his," and he's talking about my cousin's rat rod. So, of course he's going to be pushing on that issue, you know? And I mean, Pentel don't have nitpicking, what you call it, whatever you want, but for him to sit there and harass my cousin every year, you know? Like I said, I just barely moved in there two months ago, and here I'm getting hit, and I got, you know, basically, if it wasn't for him, I hadn't a lot of place to go, and I don't want to be on the streets. But here, code enforcement's putting us out on the street because we're not complying to what? Vehicles not being registered? They're in the backyard, they're not on the streets, they're not hurting nobody. Because I've dealt with city, or the DMV, because I tried to get my vehicle's license. They said, "Got to take it up with West Valley," because I'm not driving them all. So what I'll have to, you know, well, I'm driving it, I'll license it, insure it. But if they're sending my yard, I don't see why I should be able to have to do it, because I got insurance, my homeowner's insurance is going to cover it anyways if something happens. But where you guys come and saying, "I need my vehicles registered and licensed, and if I don't get it, they're taking them," I don't find that a bit fair. And then you go to court on it, and you got Pentel being a prosecutor on this case that he's complaining about? That ain't right then either. The judge and Pentel, they got to have prosecutors, so he's prosecuting his own code enforcement laws. And you know, they want to give us two weeks to get it all cleaned up. I mean, that's kind of a touchy situation when you're going to take a man's house and everything he's worked for his whole life, you know? I'm on disability. I mean, I got blood clots. I could die any day. I don't care about that part, but you know, taking my livelihood, what I have, is not right for some code enforcement to come in here when it's not even hurting nobody because it's in the backyard. I mean, where do we get our, you know, rights to say, "Hey, look, grandfathered in?" I mean, to fine people $250, and where does this all go to anyways? Money. West Valley don't get it? Bullcrap. Because the neighbor across the street, he had to pay for the city police, $50 an hour, and there's six of them, for each cop. And we pay our city taxes for that, you know? Yes, code enforcement went in there, they tore up his yard. They tell him, "He's got to fix his own yard," but code enforcement destroyed it. I mean, where we going to draw the line? This ain't right to have, you know, they destroy it, we got to fix it. We pay our taxes for the city police. But yeah, when they get called by city code, city code ordinance or ordinance, it's $50 an hour? You got six of them? Understand, yeah, they're there to protect. They need to protect the ordinance, but you know, it's because they're out there putting us citizens in a position to where we have to fight back. We have no other choice. I mean, yes, there's been one that got, that lady got something that's bad, but they're leaving the guy no other option. I mean, hell, you can take my stuff, I have nowhere else to go but to prison. That ain't, you know, that ain't anything that we want our city to be known for. Want to be happy, want to everybody get along, but we're going to start bringing in the ordinance and that is kind of a bad thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who was desiring to speak in our public comment period? Mr. Markham. Mr. Markham comes frequently, so we know him, unfortunately.
Markham, I hope I don't alienate my good friends back here, Ted and Cat. We have cabins by each other up there, but I want to, you guys know how strong I feel about our code enforcement. You know, people want to do what they want to do in their yard, but if it's negatively affecting the entire neighborhood and the neighbors around you, then the houses grow, then it becomes a real problem. I'm a huge supporter of code enforcement. Now, as I listen to Ted and Cat talk, they might be getting a raw deal if they couldn't get the title to move that. I don't know, but, but maybe we need to be able to have pictures or maybe Lane could bring up on his laptop, the enforcement pictures and so forth, and the dates of when all this has happened, or plan ahead. You know, Ted and Cat, they've got a lot of paperwork there that shows. You know, if we had both sides of what was happening on a video of when a particular case comes up, maybe that would save everybody some time and effort. I don't know how detailed Lane can be on this stuff, but I've sent pictures to Jake that I wanted him to bring up on the screen, but I took care of it prior to that happening. But I think if we can get some pictures, that's what's really going on in some of these yards. I've got a used car lot in my neighborhood that I've worked and worked, and Mr. Pyle has been working with me on it to get rid of it, and now I've got the state involved, trying to get them to revoke the dealer's license because of the, because of the problem. If, if people don't want to conform, they're not going to conform it at somebody else's problem. Well, I want a nice tidy West Valley City. I'm tired of my friends asking me, "Well, why in the hell do you live in West Valley? You can live anyplace you want." Well, I'm not going to walk away from my house. I'm going to fight for tidy, well-taken-care-of West Valley City. I don't know about being grandfathered in to have a bad yard. You might be grandfathered in to have chickens or, or something like that, but I'm not sure anybody's grandfathered in to have a wrecking yard at their house. If you don't drive them, you got to get rid of them. You know, I've got four cars and a two-car garage, but you don't see them sitting anyplace, you know? I park them behind a gate. Two of them have to stay in a garage. One's at my son's house, one stays at a shop. But I don't believe what I want should negatively affect the community in my neighborhood and the city as a whole. West Valley City, the name, I believe, has always been a horrible name. The west side has always been known as bad. So, you know, and it's too costly. We've talked about that. You can never afford to change the name of the city, but you know, we all need to work together for a better city. You know, I wasn't around any of the code enforcement people to see how they acted, or I've not been around the police. I've been on a, been on a ride along with the police department when I went through the Citizens Police Academy, and all the officers I was around, and the ones I've got to know since, have all been great people. The code enforcement people that I've talked to have been nice to me. They've called me back, they've returned my call, you know, but I haven't backed them into a corner. And you back any individual into a corner, nobody knows how they're going to react. You don't know how the citizen is going to react, and you don't know how the code enforcement officer is going to act. But if, if we continue to have lots of problems with one code enforcement being belligerent or whatever, is one thing, but I think we need to see both sides of it. Was the property owner belligerent to the code enforcement officer? Because I don't think the code enforcement officer would be, would be bad first, belligerent first. I mean, I've known them. In my time, I've known a lot of police officers. That's probably why I can't run for office, because I've known too many of them. But, you know, everybody needs to work together and try to make this a city that we can all live together in and not negatively affect our neighbors. So, my time's up. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Neil Reedy, and like our friend Marty, he builds cars, and it's obvious.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
I'm Neil Reedy.
Neil Reedy?
Yeah, Reedy, R-E-D-Y. Yeah, and he had this semi-truck, you know, it's, you can't even see nothing from the backyard. And last year, we had to put gravel under all the vehicles, and we did all that, and we were supposed to do, and now, I mean, the cars ain't broken down in the Alveron, and there's more that feels like... And there's more that, it's like, you got this hot rod moving and building. But even them run now. You know, we're building the frames. We're building 27s. And they're saying that they're going to take all this stuff. They can't even see from the street. And they said they, and they don't even, we got six-foot walls around the whole yard. And yet they still know what's in our backyard. And it's unbelievable. I mean, well, through their, and two years on, we're in two weeks to do it last time. But we got all the gravel in there. It's all nice and tidy. The roofs don't leak. And we got some trucks in the yard, in the front yard. But we got two driveways and they're not parked off the concrete. They're, now they're all rich, I go and rich heard them all for me just the other day. But they're still talking about the semi truck. And he hasn't, his mom has, there's a thing with title about the house. But anyway, he hasn't been informed about no paperwork, about what's expected of him, just to clean up the yard. And I think, yeah, and Pinto, he has, he's very rude. He's supposed to be professional. He shouldn't even be talking about the merchandise on the property whatsoever. He should just be doing his job and saying, you know what? We got this thing here. There's got to be some kind of pictures, some kind of proof to show you people what's going wrong and be decisive, not just by hearsay of any means. There has to be more investigation going on. The city's going through there. Give a little more respect to the homeowners. You know what I mean? Because I've had my run with the police, but like I said, it was my dealings, you know what I mean? And a lot of them were good, but you know what? There's a lot of them that weren't, you know what I mean? And I'm not here to talk about that. But I'm just saying, people don't expect everybody to be doing their job the right way because some people just ain't. They got some guy woke up on a bad morning or something. This guy, Pitt Pinto, he is definitely way out of line. He's not good for nobody, just causing morale. And I would have that looked into. Because making threats like, telling one neighbor, well, this is going to be you next week. That's way out of line, I think. It's more of a negative threat. Because, oh, that's going to be you. They're going to be taking all of your stuff. Like the neighbor, they said that you can't have access on this one side of the house where it's a road. But they used it and they tore up all his grass, removed his stuff out and gave him the final two weeks to repair it on top of that. It's like, why couldn't they use the main driveway? Why did they have to go and tear up his yard and make him clean it? I don't understand. So I think people have to do more investigations on people that they're hired to enforce. And also a little bit more leniency, I mean, just being kind and professional about what has to be done in order to inform and also in timely, you know, fashion. I understand all that. But there has to be more investigations because, like I said, people are getting hurt. People are getting upset. Sure, when I was the other member, there's a lot more upset people. And they're just kind of, you know, like the lady that got shot, you know? That's sad for her. But people, but there's no change about investigating on how people are acting and treating people on their property. There has to be a little bit more professional. Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't get an address for you, so for follow-up. So maybe if you could meet with me just right after.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
I believe that was all that I saw that had public comment. And I think we're pretty close to our time anyway. We do limit it to about a half hour. Just, we do need to do a couple of other things, although we don't have a big agenda tonight. So that you understand, we take these items. And again, thank you to all of you who came to share your comments. Those that were specific problems, we generally will take a look at those just to see if there was anything else that needed to be done there. We will, I'm not recommending a policy discussion on code enforcement per se that we would need to put on our agenda, but rather to follow up on some of these individually. If that's okay. And I'm just looking down through here. I don't know on the RV versus a truck or, you know, the diesel. I don't know what to do with that one. Never heard that before. Or is it registered?
I don't think there's enough information there, Mayor, to, I don't think there's enough information to even form a question, so I can't really give you an answer.
So again, on that, if you want some follow-up on these, in fact, I think I'll, on each of these, it looks like, unless there are some the council had, that we would follow those up individually for those who want to stay after. If it's okay, talk with us just for a minute. Okay? And seeing no comments from the council other than that? No, just on those, I was just noting that we will not be putting these on next week's agenda. We'll address them individually. So with that, Mr. Pyle, you're on the agenda next, if you would like.
I don't have any items. Thanks, Mayor.
To the council. We do have to be somewhat circumspect on getting into too much discussion. But let's see, let's go on with our agenda. We have just a couple more items and we'll be through for the evening. Resolution 19-35. This is an inter-local cooperation agreement between our city and the county on the construction of 2550 South. This is an ongoing project. We've received funding. These funds came through the county, of which a portion came from, I know UDOT's funded some money on that. This particular resolution is for $1,500,000. That does not finish it, but it's the next step in the process of working on this. And this will take several years. Ultimately, it's going to be a street. So UDOT funded some design and construction money and this will, and then for the new road construction there, we'll be working on this along with future items where we'll continue on that. Some of it we can't even do yet. But ultimately, it will be a nice addition to our city in that area, 2550 South. That is an introduction to the issue. And with that introduction, I'll go to the council for any comments or motions.
I move for approval of Resolution 19-35.
Second. Any further comments? If it seems like we don't ask a lot about these, just so you know, we did study this and asked questions in last week's meeting, in our study meeting. So lest you think we don't pay attention, we do. But this one is fairly straightforward. We like to take money from other government entities to help us with our rules. With that, then, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 19-36. This one is even easier. Along that same roadway, we are doing some improvements. And in order to do those improvements, we have to enter into easement purchase agreements for sidewalks and different things. And then temporary construction easements as we work there. And so this resolution will allow us to do that. We have done a number of them there along this, that Beasley Lane area. We're also doing a bunch on 2700 West. We just finished, we finished up most of them on 4100 South. We had a ton of them there. And these are just things we need to do. And so pretty straightforward with that, then, that's enough introduction talking about it. To the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 19-36. Second.
Promptly before us, seeing no further discussion, to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session. Those are only done under unique circumstances. With that, then, I believe our work is done here, other than what visiting we might do afterwards. So.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. We're adjourned for tonight. Thank you all for coming.